All the meeting to order, roll call please.
Mayor Williams.
Here.
Mayor President Smith.
Here.
Councilwoman Davies. Councilwoman Cattie.
Here.
Councilwoman Corwin.
Here.
Councilwoman Davies and Allison, thank you.
Okay, and before we proceed, I would like to once again read a statement about the audience, please. Several citizens have expressed concerns regarding safety for both citizens and staff in attendance at council meetings. In response to these concerns, we kindly request all audience members in the council chambers to be seated throughout the meeting unless speaking at the podium. We also request that citizens in attendance remain in the audience seating area and refrain from approaching council members and staff at the dais. We thank you for your anticipated cooperation. At this time, please all rise for the invocation that will be delivered by Pastor Kevin Cottle from Christian Life Assembly.
Hello, this is the Father. We just say a moment tonight, and every time I stand here, I'm incredibly thankful for our country, the freedom that we can have, and as we just celebrated yesterday, we achieved it with the American worker and your blessings in our country. We are incredibly thankful. Just pray for the nice proceedings that you would give our leadership wisdom as they make decisions that affects not just their lives, but all of our lives. So pray that you give them your wisdom and not just their own wisdom, and that you can ever again among these proceedings. I ask you in your name.
Mr. Smith, would you lead us in the flag salute, please?
Salute. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. May be seated. Consent agenda. All items listed with an asterisk are considered to be routine and non-controversial by city staff. Consent items will be considered first and may be approved by one motion if no member of the council or audience wishes to comment or ask questions. If comment or discussion is desired by anyone, the item will be removed from the consent agenda and will be considered in listed sequence with an opportunity for any member of the public to address the city council concerning the items. Does anyone from the audience wish something to be removed from the consent agenda? Hannah?
So I would like to make one amount correction to page nine on the list of vendor, the voucher, page nine. The vendor name is California Municipal Treasurers Association. I've changed the amount from 790 to 95. Just a quick correction.
Thank you. The council have anything they would like to have removed from the consent? If not, we'll entertain a motion.
Motion on consent with the change.
Move and seated. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Let the record show it was a four zero vote. Audience oral and written communications. The city council welcomes public comments on any items within the subject matter jurisdiction of council. We respectfully request that this public forum be utilized in a positive and constructive manner. Persons addressing the council should first state their name, and area of residence, the matter of the city business to be discussed, and the organization or person represented. Comment directed to an item on the agenda should be made at the time that agenda item comes up. No action can be taken by the council on matters not listed on the agenda except in certain specified circumstances. Is there anyone from the audience who'd like to make comments?
Al Long, Governor. Representative of the Lees Fund on the Mount Carshow Committee. I would like to thank Mayor Williams and Chief Cooper for the toll digging their time Sunday picking off excellent choices. Thank you very much.
Thank you. It's always a fun thing. Anyone else?
Yes, Dear President, I'd just like to start my way of starting to just call me a motherfucker in the back of the room as you just all did when we started off the meeting halfway. Anyways, as I was coming up here, I gave you some information, and did you have a chance to pass it out? Did you guys review that?
Yes.
For agenda items that are requested, who's in the hall be placed on agenda, these are items that we actually have discussed. And I'm kind of concerned with the process of agenda items. They're going to be prepared to correct Garrett, but the issue is Garrett for Chief Crager. So how do we go about this? We've already suggested something to Phil Smith, okay, that is another agenda, but as you said before, in a committee in the past, we've done nothing but anything. So I'm just, I'm trying to figure out what avenue do we take here if the issue is?
Well, agenda items that are brought up in that manner are discussed with me and with the city staff and with the city attorney. And we made the determination that these are very old items and we're not going to bring them up anymore.
Oh, so it's age?
Pardon?
It's age.
Well, and personnel and?
Personnel.
Well, one of them is a personnel item.
Really? Because when I looked into the stuff you guys have in the council, that you said that happened in excess of almost, almost two years. Then you guys investigated that, hired attorneys and investigators.
It's not three years, so.
I'm sorry?
It's not three years, but that's all.
That's three years.
We are not going to discuss this. One of them was, would be a personnel item. We don't put personnel items on the agenda in this manner. We are not going to change how we buy fuel and.
Why are we going to discuss that?
Because we don't want to. And I'm really sorry, but that's, that's it.
You got a bunch of, I don't want to pick and choose. It's kind of like I was just going to, you got to drive through the city. I like this, but I don't like this. Are you two of these that throw away the rest?
We're not going to discuss these, so I really need for you to take your seat.
I know, but I'm not done yet. So I'm, watch the clock, so am I. So why aren't you discussing this? What is my policy of procedure says that she gave, what's your, what's timeframe? Because there's no timeframe when I turned in my paperwork to this man, but he gave out my paperwork now.
Which man are you pointing to?
Chief Crager. When I turned in my appeal, it was heard by you guys. Now he gave a fine. Does he even want his name on there? Look at Murphy's.
Okay, we're not going to, we're not here to attack staff members. I gave you an answer and I'm not going to change with that answer.
I'm stating the fact, I wasn't attacking anybody. So you're not, you're not even entertaining the fact.
No.
You should, you should be putting up half the bits.
No.
And Phil, you're not going to suggest your committees, that you talk about the past?
We're not discussing your items that have been brought up, and brought up, and brought up.
But you're, I said, you're not going to discuss anything about committees that you formed in the past. I'm talking about Garrett.
We have an active employee that has a concern, we could listen to them, yes.
There him?
Chief Taylor is upstairs.
Your plate is on here.
Chief Taylor is upstairs. Please return to your seat.
Thank you.
All right. Are you going to address this from back here or mine? Here.
Please take your seat. Are there any comments from the audience? If not, we're going to, oh, sorry.
Dear Jacob, District Five. I won't apologize for the last meeting, the way our city attorney acted towards you. I don't know what provoked him, what set him off, but I feel uncomfortable with him being an illegal representation. And this takes me back to our three-minute clause. A citizen has three minutes to come before the council and state their piece, ask questions. You don't have to respond, and I understand that. But when we are interrupted by people that are not being asked a question, oh, does my time stop there or does they get eat of my time? And I'm referring to that meeting where both the attorney and Mr. Garrett jumped in, and I couldn't even make my statement because of their interruptions, were my question to you, Madam Mayor, was to you?
Well, I would like to tell you that had you pointed your finger at me in that manner, I would have jumped up and yelled at me too.
What manner? What manner?
It doesn't, I don't have to describe the manner.
Well, you do.
No.
You just made an allegation towards me. I would like clarification.
You don't get to point your finger at people like that.
I did not do that.
Okay, and that's what we did.
I pointed one finger. I did not make this. It was one finger at him because he was trying to run the meeting, but it's your meeting to run.
He was not trying to run the meeting, and I'm not going to discuss this with you any further. What, if you have questions during your three minutes you'd like to discuss, that's fine, but I am not going to demand apology from a staff member. I'm not.
I'm surprised. I really am. I thought this council had some junction, you know, standing behind your citizens, unpaid salary here. And we know if we take it to City Hall, it's going to fall on the floor, it's not going to get passed. And like agenda, I have asked them, I called City Hall, has done the same thing. They don't get on the agenda. Garrett controls the city. It's our city, all of us.
Garrett does not control the city, and you have thirty seconds left. That's right.
I don't have this time, I keep pressing the clock. You don't need to remind me. I want you as a council to represent your districts and support your district and your people. He does what you say, not you do what he says. We need to get this cleaned up because there's things that are wrong in the city, and I think everybody knows where they fall, and it's Mr. Garrett. And this goes back twenty-five years. I'm tired of it, I want clarification, and I want action out of my council.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments from the public? All right, if not, we're going to move on to item four. Disbursements and bills for RSI Petroleum. And Mr. Davies is not here tonight, so we don't have to refuse him. So we'll entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
My motion, a second. All in favor of approving those disbursements signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
No, due to the fact that it is a sole source supplier that should be bid in an open forum for other companies to participate in. So my vote is a no vote on paying that bill.
The register was a three-one vote. Number six, airport manager report.
You're going to recuse yourself?
Oh, you're going to recuse yourself?
I don't know, do I need to recuse myself?
Yes.
The FDC has already said that you have a comp.
Sure, no problem, I'll recuse myself from voting on the issue.
But you have to leave. Otherwise you're influencing the discussion.
Are you one hundred percent sure, Mr. Schroeder?
Yeah, I reviewed those FDCs.
So did I.
It's not tonight.
So did I.
Okay, and you need to leave the room.
It's voting on the issue.
No, it's leaving, it's recusing yourself and stepping down from the bench. You can't go, keep going, the audience may come.
You're sure, Mr. Schroeder?
Absolutely.
Okay, Madam Mayor, are you sure or is the city attorney sure?
We're all sure.
I'm, I'm sure. Okay, well, thank you, because Madam Mayor, you're not an attorney, so if Mr. Schroeder is sure, I will take your advice.
Okay, airport manager report.
Thank you, our mayor and council members. As the council is aware, the city entered into an agreement with the FAA in August of 2014 for the environmental assessment of both proposed relocation and reconstruction of south side parallel taxiway and connecting taxways, including drainage improvements at the Hatchfield Municipal Airport. The environmental assessment has since been completed, and now staff is ready to move into design phase of the project. In anticipation of this, the city council approved a placeholder application for the design of the project in December of 2018. That application has now been approved and a grant agreement, which is included in the report, has been received. Along with the FAA grant, which will account for ninety percent of the project funding, local agencies are able to submit a grant request to Caltrans, Division of Aeronautics, for five percent of the federal share of the project. The total cost for Phase One, which is the design of the project, is estimated to be two-hundred-and-ten-thousand. Therefore, the federal's share will be one-hundred-and-eighty-nine-thousand, and Caltrans' share will be nine-thousand-four-hundred-and-fifty. Sorry, nine-thousand-four-hundred-and-fifty. For the fiscal impact, the city has budgeted eleven-thousand-five-hundred-and-fifty. That would be if we received both the FAA and Caltrans funding. In the case that we do not receive the Caltrans funding, the fiscal impact in the city would be twenty-one thousand. Staff would like to recommend that the council approve the grant application between the city Hatchfield and the Federal Aviation Administration for the rehabilitation and relocation of the south side parallel taxiway and connecting taxways, including airfield drainage improvements, design only, and authorize the city manager to sign a agreement as the city's authorized representative. We'd also like you to approve the proposed resolution authorizing submission of an application, acceptance of an allocation of funds, and execution of a grant agreement with the California Department of Transportation for an airport improvement program, AIP, matching grant. If you have any questions that are technical questions, we do have our airport engineer, John Smith, here today, in the audience.
Okay, thank you. Are there any questions from the audience concerning this?
Chairman, I would say, other than the city, James Rose. Now, it's too bad that Councilman Hesse can't be here, because he probably knows more about this airport, being a captain of the airport, has certain secrets, some kind of interest, but that's a separate point. My first question is, is this a environmental assessment, is that a CEQA or a DIPA, this assessment? I guess, I guess that's the issue.
Do you want to just get all the questions and we'll bring up our engineer?
Well, yeah, that's my first question, was it CEQA or DIPA? I have a DIPA, and I'd like to know about, what's the starting date of my meeting? And I'd like to know about how long it would take, how long the airport, if the airport is coming out of service, how long that would take. And also, I have a question, I talked to the engineer. The run-up area, as for the diagram, I think he presented me with, shows a run-up area for runway one is going, is coming, if the airplane is facing the runway, it's going to blast, then hangar at the end of that. And so, it would seem to me, if possible, and hope it's possible, to put a run-up area, is at the very end of the taxiway, to, to, where you can leave the runway and go out into the taxiway on the overrun area. That gives you a form for the runway for takeoff, and you won't have to got taxi, in your, your runway, not to got taxi to take off, if that taxi was needed. And that means that you use the full length of the runway, including the overrun areas, the airplane, which will be higher, on the, which are required over the houses, on the, you're trying to run with. So I think that's a city consideration, since you, you are moving the taxiway, on the east of South, twenty-eight, twenty, twenty-eight feet. So, remember the run-up areas we have, is on the diagram, if you believe, is the run-up area is at the very end of the runway adjacent to the overrun areas.
We're batting your microphone.
Sorry?
We're batting the microphone.
He's not, it's his, it's his, um, his lips are closed, that's why.
Oh, sorry. Anyway, that's, those are my questions. The run-up area, and if the airport will be out of service, and how long the permission will take, maybe you can discuss, we've been bringing a whole bunch of dirt, and I'm just curious where the dirt's going to go, and how the traffic's going to flow, and when the time is, and you're going to find, so thank you.
So we did address the run-up area with the EA, we have some concerns by the tenant that was at that particular hangar, which I'll let our engineer get a little more into. And it will, the majority of the work will be done at night. So again, I'll let our engineer get more into detail.
Please, sir.
Madam Mayor, members of the council, John Smith, Tartelet Engineering. I've had the pleasure of working on a contract basis with the city of Hatchfield for several years, and always look forward to working with you and coming to these meetings. Thank you for inviting me. Mr. Roberts, thank you very much for your questions. I'd like to, I took some notes, let me see if I can get them. The environmental document was both a DIPA and a CEQA, California Environmental Quality Act compliant. DIPA, DIPA is required because of the federal funding. The DIPA is the federal environmental component. The, uh, I'd also, before we get into the technical aspect, I would like to say congratulations on actually moving this project as far along as you already have to this point. You have, through the fact that you have a updated airport layout plan, you have completed the planning component of the project. Now, you recently completed the environmental component of the project of the DIPA and CEQA passage, and is, the receipt of a Fonzie, a finding of no significant impact, that, that shows your commitment to the project. The next step is another, is a series, even though the FAA calls it Phase One Design, technically in this timeline, you can call it Phase Three. The, the contract before you, or the grant before you is for design only, so the city at Hatchfield will not be moving dirt anytime in the near future. You will go through a design process, the design will be reviewed and approved by the FAA and the city staff. At such time, the design will be complete. Included in the design will be a facing component. We're, we're sensitive to the needs and the uses of the Hatchfield Airport, including the businesses that are on the airport. We have no intentions or no desire to adversely impact one business or one tenant over another. That's never at all. We have experience with accomplishing a tremendous amount of work in very short windows, either at night, as the airport manager mentioned, or during some off-peak windows during the day. It is anticipated that when the project gets further along in the design process, there will be a meeting with users and tenants in which the facing plan will be presented to them, and there will be discussion, a candid discussion about what is happening and where it's happening and when it is happening. The, the, if you, if you can imagine the inverse of how long versus impact to users, one goes up, one goes down, we could wrap this whole thing up in a year, working in two and three-hour windows, or we could wrap it up much faster, working in longer windows. As you try to, to, I hate, I always hate to use the phrase unintended consequences, because it sounds kind of weak or it's a crotch thing to hang on. But in reality, there is a potential for facing plan to result in unintended consequences when you were trying to serve or favor these five people to the adverse impact of these five people. Our facing plans, we try to take all that into consideration, come up with a facing plan, and we fill over. There is absolutely no desire to close the airport. The airport will not be closed for any extended period of time. I can also say, in addition to, I hate that one phrase, I'll say the other phrase, which I do love, is it always gets worse before it gets better. We're, we're going to have some disruption, we're going to have these things out there that are going to tell you, plane can't go down here, you got to go that way, you got to do this. That's going to happen. We try to keep that to a minimum, but again, try to keep the airport open and functioning. I, I believe I might have actually talked to Mr. Roberts earlier regarding the configuration of the run-up apron, and we will certainly, we've given an initial response, happy to revisit it, but what I really wanted to do is I want to applaud Mr. Roberts' vision of operating aircraft on the overrun area. And I would love to have a further discussion with Mr. Roberts about taking what you have and demarking those overruns, putting, taking off the yellow lines, putting on the white lines, making it a little bit longer run, to the benefit of, of everybody. And I'd love to have that discussion. The, the taxiway is, is being moved twenty-eight feet further south. You are currently, you're currently, the, the runway to parallel taxiway, centerline to centerline separation is currently a hundred-and-twenty-two feet. The standards that FAA applies has to do is related to the size of aircraft that are intended to be used for the airport. Your standard for the aircraft that we have, that intend to use this airport, your standard is one-hundred-and-fifty feet, centerline to centerline. That's a twenty-eight-foot shift away from the runway. One-hundred-and-fifty feet may seem like a lot, so I started looking around, my favorite tool, Google Earth today, just as a matter of reference, because I like data points. So as a matter of reference, well, how the end occurred, the runway, excuse me, the runway centerline to parallel taxiway centerline is five-hundred feet. Now, I'll be the first to admit that those two airports attract a, certainly a larger aircraft. The purpose of that discussion is to kind of bracket, how big is the ballpark? How big is the ballpark, where they could be? Bringing it close to home, two airports that are on the Hatchfield, Cal Cities and Vangersville Union, not too far from here, both of those, the runway to parallel taxiway centerline separation is two-hundred-and-fifty feet right now. So it's only one-hundred feet more than what we are trying to accomplish here. Runway to taxiway separation is a safety component. On occasion, the fun word that the FAA likes to use is that the airplane took an excursion. Airplane excursions happen all the time, and it's typically when they quit going straight, they either go left or they go right. The purpose of separation is to try to, to restrict or limit the amount of adverse impact based on an excursion. I think that it actually covered one bit of the discussion of the sculptural work. If, I think I've addressed Mr. Roberts' questions. Is there anything else I can answer?
Anyone?
Good evening. Thank you for being here. He also wanted to know, since this is a design phase, he was wanting to know when that was going to start. He may have wanted to know when dirt is going to be, you know, being moved, but that's, that's in a future phase, correct?
Yeah, Councilman Smith, absolutely. He did ask about the schedule of the start date.
So at this point, I was just curious why you'd be doing this work and I did this design?
No, 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 great question. I prefer to design during the day.
I bet.
On occasion, you might find us in the office on a weekend. Yesterday, we were there, it happened to be this funny Monday of holiday, and we were there. So the, uh, design all during the day, design in the comfort of our office. I was referring, I was jumping ahead to construction, which would, which results in the areas of interest that I presume from, from the top. So as far as the schedule, this grant is for a year, so you should look at nothing out in the field for over a year. So next spring is April of 2020. I would presume you would be going out to bid in April of 2021 for a summer, is that all right? For a summer 2021 construction period of Phase One, which is the, well, I think called Phase Two, which is the drainage component, which is the smaller component, probably followed by what would be Phase Three in 2022.
Yes, sir. That's correct, I'm following.
Thank you, Mr. Smith.
Okay, thank you very much. And you mentioned something that you wish you could take some of the crosshatched areas and actually link them to the runway name?
I did.
So that's not part of this project or any part of this design.
It is absolutely not part of this project.
And we don't even know that we could do that, but it's always better to have a longer one's seat.
If I hadn't been in the room with you, runway energy is far better than runway line.
Thank you for your comments. I hope I can catch all of Jim's comments.
Yes, thank you. You can't eliminate the crosshatched, crosshatched areas, because those are this way thresholds. You can use them for takeoff, you can't use them for landing, you can use them for landing, brings them a lot more closer, like to Dennis Road, it means the airport for landing, that have to be much more open houses. So runway length will probably have to be the same, it's just a takeoff length will be longer, because you dig up from the crosshatch of the overrun areas. You can't, you can't get the runway longer.
No, he, he just mentioned he wished we could, and now this just is happening in the last round. I understand.
It's, it's.
Thank you.
Mr. Roberts is correct, you cannot use that. Mr. Roberts is correct, you could not use that portion of the, of each end of the runway for landing. However, you keep talking about the runway in singular. Your runway is actually, as it says today, is actually two runways. There's runway one-one from this direction and runway two-nine from that direction, depending upon which way the wind blows. That's actually a question on PE. Uh, did you answer that question, Burke? What, I answered that? It is possible for a piece of pavement to actually be four runways. The landing length, the takeoff length, the landing length and the takeoff length. The plan that I, that we're really getting off course here, but the plan that I just briefly hinted at would be to take the yellow marking on that overrun, turn it into white for a rollout and takeoff. You, you are limited on landing because of the freeway and you are limited on landing because of the runways. Those landing thresholds would never be there.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? If not, I will entertain a motion to approve this. Grant as presented.
I'm hoping that we approve the grant agreement for the relocation and reconstruction of South Side Parallel Taxiway and connecting taxiways and drainage improvements.
Thank you. Have a second.
Have a second. And just to note, if we do get the other 5% from Caltrans Aeronautical, the amount is gonna be 94.50, of which we budgeted 11,500, correct?
Correct.
So, for 94.50, 9,450, we're getting design work of $210,000. I think that's a pretty good bargain in many.
The 9,450 would be Caltrans portion, so for 11,500.
Correct. But for the amount that we are paying, our portion of 5% that's left that we pay is, that's bargaining, so for the work to figure that out over $210,000. It's our tax money, we're getting it back to grants, and we're having to pay out of the airport, but the 5% that's left, so. Yes, I second the motion.
I think the motion should also include approving the resolution.
Do you want to add that?
Sure.
It's in, it's in the staff.
Yes, yes.
Did you just say add that?
Yes, yes. Okay. All right. All in favor of this motion with corrections, say aye. Aye. Opposed? Let the record show it was a 3-0 vote. Thank you. Public Works Director? Wait just a minute.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, council members. As originally constructed during the Phase Two of the 1992 wastewater treatment plant project, four asphalt lining manufacturer beds were constructed at the wastewater treatment plant for further treatment and storage of biosolids prior to disposal. Currently, these beds are being utilized for storage of treated biosolids, which are processed by sludge de-watering press, and that was installed in 2012. The treated biosolids are subsequently hauled off site for further processing at liberty composting in moss hills. The asphalt lining of the bed that is primarily used for storage activities has deteriorated significantly over the past year to, due to a number of factors, including continual equipment usage in the beds and excessive moisture over the last winter specifically. City attached staff contacted nine licensed contractors for the purposes of listing quotes to replace the deteriorated asphalt with concrete in order to address the deterioration issue. Quotes were provided by two of the nine contractors and lowest bid was supplied by Terry Bedford Concrete Construction, which includes rehabilitating the entry ramp located on the east side of the bed and replacing all of the existing asphalt located on the west side of the bed with reinforced concrete. Funding for this project is not budgeted in the 1920 budget and will come from the wastewater fund. Funds previously designated to the Manhole Race Degraded Project will be reallocated to fund this project and not, we will not do the Race Degraded Project until next year. So, staffer recommendation is to approve bid from Terry Bedford Construction for the entry ramp, entry ramp alternate and slab continuation alternate items as described in the attached quote in the amount of $36,096 and authorize the city manager to approve any necessary change orders up to a maximum of 5% of the original contract. I'll be happy to answer any questions if you have any.
Are there any questions from the audience concerning this item? Counsel?
Motion on staff for recommendation to approve.
Second. Moved and seconded. All in favor of approving the wastewater treatment plant manufacturer bed rehabilitation, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
All of city, Madam Mayor, due to lack of information on the project.
Okay, the vote was three ayes and one abstention. Number eight?
Honorable Mayor, council members, I have before you tonight is the State Transit Assistance State of Good Repair Program. Briefly, as we've done this a number of times now with SB One, commonly known as the Gas Tax, but officially known as the Road Repair and Counting the Act of 2017, there were a number of programs in which the revenue from that act are diverted into, and then those programs then subsequently distributed the money to municipalities all across the state. One of those programs is the State of Good Repair Program. And like the other programs that we brought to you for a resolution, the state requires that we pre-identify a non-money-making list of the projects that we expect to spend the funds on as they provide the allocation to us. And so, that's what's before you tonight. State of Good Repair Program is fully known as the State Transit Assistance State of Good Repair Program, so the money is limited to transit-related activities only. In this case, we are recommending allocation of these funds to our upcoming out-forbid ATP railroad pedestrian safety project. It is, it qualifies in this case because of the proximity of the pedestrian improvements to the recently constructed parking ride and transit facility. And we believe we're gonna need funds to complete that project. All told, it's about $16,000. This is not a sizable item in granting. Therefore, my recommendation is that you adopt a resolution, the city council and the city of Tehachapi identifying those projects that we utilize State Transit Assistance State of Good Repair Program funds for the 1920 fiscal year. And we'd be happy to answer any questions.
Are there any questions from the audience regarding this item? Counsel? I'll entertain a motion.
Still moved?
Have a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded to approve this item as presented. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Madam Mayor, all of state on the vote.
Record show it was three ayes, one abstention. Police Chief reported.
Good evening, I'm here, ladies and gentlemen. I am here to see me as a memorandum of understanding from the city of Tehachapi, Tehachapi Police Department, and Tehachapi Unified School District. As council, the Tehachapi Police Department has provided the Tehachapi Unified School District with a law enforcement officer known as the School Resource Officer, in order to enhance student safety and to promote the overall safety and security of the educational environment in Tehachapi Unified Schools. The School Resource Officer has played an important role in maintaining and increasing the safety within our schools and neighboring communities. For this reason, it's imperative for public safety that we continue this partnership with the Tehachapi Unified School District. Current memorandum of understanding, clearly document and program purpose, partner roles, and responsibilities required, and some information sharing and supervision that the SRO has been established. As far as the fiscal impact, the school district reimburses us 7% of the School Resource Officer's salary and benefits for the 10-month period that school is in session. Remaining cost is absorbed by the police department and is included within the existing budget. This agreement's a little different, as in this year, we have done a three-year agreement with the school district. Previously, we've done one-year agreements, and we have to continuously bring it back every year. And sometimes it's a little challenging getting it to the school board for their approval, getting back to, back here for their approvals, so we elected to oppose a three-year agreement. And the school district is happy, like, that's the partnership, and we're happy to continue the partnership. So, we'd be happy to answer your questions.
Any questions in the audience regarding this grant? Counsel?
I think it's the program that we've been using. Whenever you do a partnership, it just shows you the other areas of the community that the school district, it makes it for a more universal person to consider, to pick it up and attach. So, I think it's, it's well worth it. Mr. Renegades should approve.
Motion.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
I second.
Moved and seconded to approve this memorandum as presented by the police chief. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Madam Mayor, I will abstain, since this was an issue that was levied against me regarding my conversations or potential conversations with persons involving the school district regarding issues associated with the harassment charges and allegations that were filed against me by certain city staff.
All right. Record show it was three ayes, one abstention. City managers report?
None.
Councilmember reports? Mr. Smith?
There were three of us that attended the County Association of Cities meeting last week. Councilmember Ford, Mayor Grayton, myself. The guest speaker was former Congressman Bill Thomas. He was the Ways and Means Chairman during his tenure there. He's still very active in transportation projects, of which one is his namesake, is the Thomas Lord's Improvement Plan. West Side Parkway or Centennial Freeway, however you wanna put it, in Bakersfield, has been in the works for a long, long time, and we're finally seeing the final stages and connections to Highway 58 and that extension. So, at some point, you'll see a smooth transition versus a dead-end in Highway 58 in railroad where you have to take a left or a right. We've seen entire neighborhood removed for that process. Work on 24th Street, all those items, those, those projects are coming to fruition. And I was very pleased when he also mentioned that the Highway 58, now that we are approving that transition, the climbing lanes, which I've been championing for the years I've been out here in council governments, is getting some traction. He has mentioned it in his, in his talks with his people. I'm getting other cities putting their support toward it. Last meeting, the city, we approved just applying for the grant for the cement money. But it's actually not a, just a benefit to the city of Tehachapi, it's a regional, if not national, project, having the truck climbing lanes finally get done. First, it's a little long way away, you know? It's probably several years out, but at least it's not just a fod on the back burner, or even Caltrans beat to the fire that they follow through with their plans and their, all their studies, and then the immediate right-of-way position at some point, and all the things that they have to do to move forward with construction. So, it's several years away, but I'm not gonna give up. And it's not, like I said, just for the city of Tehachapi, it's for everyone who drives that road from Bakersfield, and we all know what it's like. And when you have folks from Caltrans District Nine come down from Bishop, and when they go home, they have to see firsthand what it's like to have a truck pull up from them going 37, passing a truck going 35. So, we'll be all in there. So, I was very happy with that meeting and all the things that he presented through the history. If you have anything to add, it's, you know, it's a lot of fun having that.
It was, yes, fun, I guess you'd say, and it's gonna be a long project. I think he's mentioned five years to completion of the mess down in 58 and 99 down that way, so we have a little bit of waiting to do. In my area, I can see progress on Cherry Lane. I see sidewalks coming in on the south side. I wish they would do something with the north side on some occasions on Mill Street or on that Valley Boulevard. Also, I've noticed more stop signs. I don't think we want vacation, but anyway, so that's what's going on in my area. Mr. Hinchkey?
I'd like to apologize, sorry. I would like to apologize to the citizens of the greater Tehachapi area who have to now fight through the additional traffic on Tucker Road. I've been contacted by several individuals, both residents and employees of the transit system, who have to commute through that gauntlet of additional traffic signage that we now endure on Tucker Road. It's my apologies. That entire area has transformed us basically into Rosedale Highway. And it has changed the way our town will now look forever. And again, it's my personal apologies. I don't know how the rest of the council feels for that, but unfortunately, the people on Apple Extension are impacted, the people on West Split are now impacted. That one set of changes, that one road, has really dramatically impacted a lot of people's lives in a lot of different ways. And from me personally, I apologize for the city of Tehachapi not reviewing that process a little more thoroughly before pulling the trigger on allowing a project and signage like that to happen. And that's all I have, Madam Mayor.
I would just like to echo what Mr. Smith said. I've known Congressman Thomas for a long, long time. I helped in his first campaign when he was running through California Assembly. And I was so impressed by his, his talk the other night, because we're all getting older, and I was wondering, would he still be that guy who knew everything? And he was. Real sharp, went back to 1962 and brought forward, and it was a very interesting talk. And I, if any of you have a chance to hear him somewhere else, you should go look him up. Any other comments or concerns? If not, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Oh, I'm sorry. I was just going to agree with Mr. Hinchkey on his comment. Our city is no longer a little city, it's turning into a larger city. And we're losing that small-town effect on Tucker, at least.
Okay. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion.
Second.
Moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Record show it was a 4-0 vote. Thank you.
And two will be agreed.
Thanks.